All right, it's 5:03 calling the meeting to order July 22. We have a roll call. Bob Sheehan. Jason Smigle. Lillian Camus.
Here.
Rob Chauvin.
Here.
Ken.
I'm here.
Okay, Ken. All right. Okay, great.
Jim?
Yes.
We also have Heather Labonte and Ben Haley.
And who?
Haley, H A L E Y.
Okay, all right. Welcome, everyone. So the main purpose of this meeting was to be starting workshop on discussing on what items we felt we should bring to the town for bylaw changes. And Lillian, you sent out the running list that we would have had accumulated over the last year or so. One of the, one of the items I'd like to start with, I guess what we should do is prioritize the items and then we can get into them a little bit as we, as we go on through the, the meeting and can have discussion on it. So the first one is rezoning, the industrial zone number one. South Hadley line along the Ludlow Road. That was brought to our attention through the Economic Development Committee, which, which I also sit on. And I think that's probably a good idea. I don't know what it's going to do for us, but seeing most of its wetlands, but we should, we should be consistent with that area and go ahead and rezone. Present rezoning that district, that area. Any, any discussion on that?
Yeah, so Bob, Bob Sheehan here. Uh, this would only be from the residential area west on New Ludlow Road to South Hadley that open area of woods.
Yes.
Bob, we can't hear you that well.
You're on mute, please. You're on mute.
Okay. Uh, my question to Jim was, this was going to be along New Ludlow Road just west of the residential area heading towards the South Hadley line where it's all woods currently. We would leave residential single in the uh, the existing area that it is where the homes are.
Okay.
Hi, this is Ken Kamea. Um, I guess the question for the board is when presenting this as a warrant article or going through the public hearing process, as this is going to be a zoning map change, are there, are you anticipating changes to uses and or standards within the, within the district? Sounds as if it's just an extension of a, of a district. Is that correct?
Yes, it is, of course.
Did somebody respond?
Yes.
Can't hear you.
Yes, I did. That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. While we're talking about rezoning, Bob, you're gonna have to go mute again. While we're talking about rezoning, um, there's also been discussion of rezoning the East Street corridor from, from Five Corners to the New Ludlow Line. Well, let me, let me, let me, let me take that back. From the existing business zoning on East Street, which, which goes, I believe, to Barton Street or, or very close to it, to the New Ludlow, uh, to the, the Ludlow Line. Now, I would suggest, and one of the reasons for that is because there's some businesses already in existence and we're trying to, um, get the property that the Westover Development Group took because of the, uh, the Westover Noise Program that they had going on and they took all those homes down. They cannot be reused for residential, but they could be used for commercial use. So what I would suggest is, and we've had some input from some of the other areas there on East Street. If we're going to put an article together, I would break it up in phases so that if one end of the East Street isn't in agreement, it doesn't, um, it doesn't kill the whole, the whole East Street corridor. So I would say from where it ends on, where, where it ends on East Street from the, the 202 corridor, I think, I think it's Barton Street, I would say we take that to New Ludlow Road and then have another separate article from New Ludlow Road to the, New Ludlow, to, uh, the Ludlow Line.
East Street, Barton Road.
What's, what's the street? If it's not, that's not Barton? What's that? All right, I'm, I'm incorrect. East Street doesn't start until you hit Morgan Street. So that would be Pleasant Street to the New Ludlow Road, East Street intersection. And then from the New Ludlow Road, East Street intersection is a Ludlow Line. So I would, I would look at those as two separate articles if we were going to put those forward after a hearing. I'd make them two separate articles for the hearing. Any discussion on that?
This is Lil. I think that's a good idea.
What's that, Lil?
I think it's a good idea.
Oh, so you think it's a good idea? Okay.
Yes.
Um, okay, so we'll, so now we've got three potential rezoning articles.
Bob Sheehan, uh, from Five Corners Pleasant Street to the New Ludlow Line, what is, what is that currently zoned?
Residential.
Residential. So you're talking about making it business?
Okay. I, I would, I would recommend, you know, when we get into that a little bit further, we'll have discussion, but it'll probably be like light commercial uh, an overlay similar to what we did, uh, on the 202 corridor. And the, and the reason why I'm saying that we should do the whole, the whole, Pleasant Street to the East Street to the Ludlow Lines, one of the big things that identifies areas to be commercial is traffic. And there's a lot of traffic. So if you put a business there, it typically doesn't increase traffic and doesn't turn it into a commercial zone. It's all, it's basically already a commercial zone based on the traffic pattern and the, and the counts that we're getting. And, and when we get into this a little bit further, we can, we can verify that. Um, when we, when we rezone the 202 corridor, especially down towards the Belcher Town Line, when we had the hearings, the residents were, um, were very much in favor of it because the zoning didn't, wasn't going to change traffic noise, traffic count, any of the things that they're, that they're dealing with living on the street, with the exception that it gives them the opportunity to maybe do something different with their, with their land and potentially making it more, um, valuable. Not from the tax perspective, but for a resale or a use perspective. And that's why they were, they were so much in favor. And I think that the same thing holds true for the, the Pleasant Street, East Street corridor. So I thi, I think, you know, with further discussion on what we would allow there, I, I think we'll get, um, I think we would get some, some positive feedback on that. But again, we should do it in two phases. One area is a little bit more populated than the other. Um, and they may not feel that way. And I'd hate to have the vote um, determine what we did with the, the area that Westover, um, to pop our tax base. And that's one of the reasons why the Economic Development Committee was, was in favor of doing that.
And also the fact that the Westover property can only be leased land.
Correct.
And it's at least a lease to, like a commercial or whatever, whatever you need.
Correct.
Uh, we didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. I said, uh, we should really consider just, is that the area of the, uh, Westover property in that, that is only a leased land by the Westover, Mr. Poplin or whoever they are and, uh, we give the, they can take it for land commercial or land industrial or whatever.
Bob?
Yes?
Bob, uh, I, you must still have your phone on mute because all I hear is an echo.
Okay, how's this, Lil?
Oh, that's much better.
Well, Jesus, I'm sorry. I apologize. What I was saying was, we should, we should really consider the Westover property area on East Street in that that can only be leased land. You're not going to lease for houses. Westover won't. But we can put some light industry or whatever in that area and hopefully help with the tax base. I'm out.
Thank you.
All right, so, so we've got the New Ludlow road rezoning, the industrial. We've got rezoning on the, the Pleasant Street to the East Street. And we've got the, the rest of the East Street to the Ludlow Line. So there's, there's three right there. Then I'm going to skip over the outdoor venue just for a minute and go, and go to the increased size for oversized bonds that current limit is 1,200 square feet before it needs, needs a zoning needs a hearing, special permit, I should say. Now, 1,200 square feet is not a lot of square footage. It, for a, for a barn or for, for some sort of storage structure. It is if you're on a quarter acre lot or a three-quarter acre lot or something along those lines. I would like to discuss, not tonight, but going at one of our next workshops of increasing it based on the total square footage of the, of the, uh, of the lot itself. So in other words, if you're sitting on 20 acres and you want to put up a, a 3,000 square foot barn, I don't see why you would need a special permit. It, we, we may want to say it's allowed with site plan approval, not a special permit so that, so that the board can be, uh, involved in the fact that it's placed on the property correctly. It's not on the edge of the property and, and it's going to cause erosion or stormwater management issues for the butter. It'd make it a, it, it just, it just, I, I don't think. Well, I mean, you can put up a 3,000 square foot, a 4,000 square foot, a 5,000 square foot dwelling on an acre without special permit, without site plan approval. And, and still have issues with a butter's would, would stormwater runoff and, and that sort of thing. So I, I think we need to look, look at that a little bit harder on what raising the threshold and eliminating the hearing. And I, I, in order to do that, I think we're going to have to get involved with the zoning board of appeals to do that. But I, we should have that discussion and make sure that they're in favor of it. And come up with some different thresholds because 1,200 square, we, it used to be 1,000. Uh, we raised it to 1,200 and never really gave it a, a lot of thought. It came in when we were doing a lot of rezoning through the whole town. And I believe that got thrown in at the last minute. Somebody said, well, we'll bump it up to 1,200. And it was like, yeah, okay, 1,200. But we didn't put a lot of thought into it. Any discussion on that? Any thoughts?
Jason Smigle here. I might.
Is somebody talking?
Yeah, Jason was just saying that he's in agreement with taking a, a look at, uh, changing the thresholds on the, on the minimum square footage for, for unattached buildings.
I would be, um, okay, go ahead.
That's Rob Chauvin. Uh, Jim, I agree with you, just what you were talking about.
Okay, good. Glad. Lillian?
Um, I, I agree. We do need to, to look at that. We need to look at, um, if we're going to put a, a maximum limit. So you have 100 acres. How big of a barn are you going to let it be?
Yeah. Well, again, we'd set the, we'd set the thresholds, if we set the thresholds to 6,000 square feet or 8,000, 10,000 square feet or whatever we set it at, anything above and beyond that would require a, a, a special permit.
That makes sense.
Pardon me?
That makes sense.
Okay, all right.
Hi, this is Ken.
Hey, Ken.
Um, I just had a, a quick comment. I think, um, yeah, I think it's a, it's a, it's, it's something that, um, as the board is exploring this, um, it, it makes sense as, you know, in the past year, I think there were three special permit slash site plan reviews for oversized barns. Um, and I think, uh, you know, I've seen communities create some sort of calculation on whether or not there would be that threshold to, um, initiate a special permit, uh, public hearing versus just a site plan review. And I would probably suggest to make it as easy as possible um, as, um, the chair was saying, uh, the site plan review process to ensure that, you know, storm water, um, if it is, uh, if there is, if it passes the threshold due, um, based on the size of the, the barn or accessory building, um, I think that, um, there probably is some good examples of, of ways to, to amend the bylaw to, um, maybe, uh, you know, consider the larger barn, but not having to go through a public hearing process.
Correct, correct. That's kind of what, what we're shooting for.
Yeah.
Okay, well, when we we get all this narrowed down and we prioritize it, then we'll probably follow up with, with meetings and, and stick to each, each one of these different amendments or rezoning as separate meetings and, and just concentrate on those one at a time until we feel comfortable that we're ready to write and, write the, write the, uh, proposed change and present it. We'll, we'll present them all at one hearing, I would assume. But as we, as we pick away at these and design the, the changes, we'll work on them one at a time. Um, okay, the outdoor venue. Well, first of all, any, any other discussion about the, the last four items we talked about before we move on to the next? Okay, so the, the, the outdoor venue, Ken, would you mind discussing that with us a little bit? Because you, you've done a little research and got some information about some other municipalities that have addressed that?
Sure, um, so I think what I, what I sent the board and what, um, Lillian had sent the board was, uh, some examples of, and I think it was two bylaws that, um, I addressed or three bylaws that I addressed. Um, that were specific to having these types, understanding based on the last, um, time we met the, with the resident who was, um, you know, suggesting a, a zoning change, um, map change to her property. Um, that these types of uses where, you know, there would be, depending on if it was a, an event or, you know, just a lot of, um, considerable more traffic that would be going to this space or this parcel, uh, that's outside of the norm because it is existing in a residential zone. Um, I think that there are some protections that the town can explore with regards to requiring a special permit for those types of uses. Um, and I suggested in, uh, a bylaw that I worked with, um, for a town that was, yes, bigger than Granby, but, um, had on the outskirts of the town, very large residential parcels. Um,
Bigger in what, big, Ken, let me interrupt you for a second. Just bigger in what sense? Population, geographic area?
Population.
Population, okay.
Yeah, so, so a, a pop, a bigger population, however, on the outskirts, large residential parcel, um, you know, served by septic uh, and probably typical of the large residential parcels that exist in Granby. Um, and so the planning board and, and the, uh, the authority that was looking at the bylaw to, to revise um, the bylaw to allow certain types of uses of those larger residential parcels, um, identified a, a, uh, want by some of the residents to use those parcels for agriculturally related uses, um, of which also included the ability to have special events or, you know, planned um, programming. However, that mechanism would work within the, within the rest of town government, whether or not, um, like the select board would need to issue special event permits or whatnot. There is definitely a, um, a, a mechanism for the planning board to review these types of, uh, uses. Um, and so, you know, what I offered was a specific section of a bylaw that would address agriculturally related uses, which could open up the town to identify other types of residential uses for the larger residential zones. Obviously, uh, you know, there, there may be in the future thought of people using their large residential zones um, for things other than farming, um, but related to, um, agricultural type uses. Um, that wouldn't, wouldn't necessarily be protected under, um, Section 3 of Chapter 48. So, and it would be things like, um, you know, corn mazes, uh, wagon hayrides, um, those types of things. Um, and, you know, the, the bylaw that I worked on with, with the community was, did include a clause in there regarding um, the non-agricultural related uses such as small-scale entertainment menu or organized meeting spaces. Um, and it did require a special permit and would go through a special permit process if, um, someone came to the board to apply for that. Um, other examples that I found, um, in the Commonwealth and, you know, I think there is this perspective that towns take with regards to these types of uses, and it really is dependent on the building inspector and the zoning enforcement officer, who is the building inspector, um, to determine whether or not that use is allowed. Um, so, you know, obviously this would be a departure from, I guess, what may be occurring in Granby. Um, because the, the resident came and asked about using the parcel for this type of, um, use. Um, but what I've seen elsewhere would be, you know, creating a permitting, uh, process which would uh, identify time, timeframes for which activities can happen. If there's like a fair, um, that may want to be, like, uh, some, you know, um, agricultural fair or any sort of outdoor fair would want to use a large residential parcel. Um, the, the board, uh, can be part of a permitting process that would review a site plan, um, or through special permit um, and identify different types of, um, conditions to allow for that fair to operate. Um, so I've seen it done, the mechanism of a, a timeframe for that type of event. And then uh, the town of Amherst, um, it identifies outdoor recreational use as an allowed use with a special permit in a similar residential rural district, so similar to yours, um, that any structure shall be accessory to the operation of the outdoor recreational use. So, um, and I don't recall the, the specifics of, um, the resident that came in, whether or not there was, uh, a constructed building that would be used as part of, um, programming. Um, but, you know, I think going through a permitting process, should the, the board want to explore this or should the town want to, um, allow for this type of use? Uh, I think it, it makes sense that it would go through a permitting process and more, more than likely a special permit process that can be conditioned to the, uh, to the approval of the planning board.
Hi, this is Heather Labonte and I'm, I'm the resident who, who had the question. Um, it would, on the onset, I was looking to have everything come in. So there would be no building attached. It would be, everything from facilities would be brought in, including tents, um, and everything would come back out. And so that, that's the premise of my business proposal. Uh, my question is, would that require a special permit for each event?
We don't, we don't know that, Heather. We're just, we're just brainstorming now on what, what.
Got it. Okay.
The different things that may be expected. I mean, there's, there's, it's not just the planning board alone. There'd be, you know, if we were to, to approve it as a zoning, you know, if the town approved it as a zoning approval, then there's, okay, then it's, then you, then you can do it. Then, then there's site plan approvals specific to each site that would be requesting it. Then there would be Board of Health. Then there would be board of health approval from their perspective, the building inspector. Everybody would have to look at that is specific to each site. This is what we're talking about is if we decide to go forward with it, getting zoning approved with certain parameters, I guess. And then, and then all the other stuff would kick in automatically, just like just because it's zone business down at Five Corners, it doesn't mean that site plan approval or special permit may not be required based on the use.
Okay.
We've got to start at the foundation and kind of work our way up. Go ahead, Bob.
Some other things that might be involved is the way that the selectmen handle Dufrane Park rentals. I believe they permit each individual of them. If there's functions there that alcohol is going to be consumed, the select board as well as the police chief anyway get involved. So we may be looking at something like that as well, Heather.
Okay, and just so that you're aware, any alcohol that would be served would be a vendor that would come in, so they come with their own liability insurance. And I'm doing that strategically so that I don't have to have the onus on me and hopefully to take some of the pressure off of the plan.
Understood. That would be for your event, they would still have to be permitted to the town to sign the license through the board of select. Board of Selectmen, so. I get what you're saying, what you're trying to do there. You're just basically leasing a plot of land out for different events. Everything else will be brought in and you'd be the event planner or coordinator. I get that, but we're trying to look at the big picture. If we're going to rezone, we have to make sure that we have.
Sure, I'm sorry for all the questions.
What's that?
I'm sorry for all the questions.
No, that's okay. That's fine. So I think I think we should probably have a discussion with the select board to see what their take is on this. I certainly don't want to go too far down the road with rezoning for something like this and the select board not be in favor of endorsing the permit, because they'd still have to permit it, whether there was alcohol or not, I would think, for an assembly. And they'd still have to approve it to go to town article.
Yeah, I think if the planning board, you know, wants to take the lead on this, we definitely would get your direction from the select board as per the zoning act. So, you know, if the planning board wants to explore this, I think conversation has to be had with the select board to see their appetite and similar to, you know, the various communication to get for the select board, like what was shared with the Economic Development Committee, something like that should come to the planning board and the planning board can set the parameters of how they want to explore, you know, a zoning amendment. There is the possibility that, you know, repetition, someone could come to the planning board or suggest that the select board that certain zoning amendments should occur. And that's a possibility too. So, you know, the planning board, if its decision is to move forward, I think some collaboration with the select board to explore that option probably should happen.
First, before we get too far down.
Yes.
So you think it'd be prudent if we got on their agenda at their next at one of their meetings in the near future? And especially now that it's a new select board?
Yeah, I think that could be something to definitely explore and maybe Ms. Labonte could be present at that meeting to also inform the select board of, you know, desires what she wants to do with her piece of land. But it definitely would help if the planning board, at least to get the direction, because as the chair said, you don't, it's one of those, you know, difficulties of presenting a zoning amendment where it's the planning board that is just pulling out of, you know, the air rather than having possibly the select board also onboard or at least exploring that option too.
Okay, so is the board in favor of getting on the agenda and having a discussion with the with the select board here at their next available slot? I don't necessarily know if the whole board has to be there, but we can ask at least somebody to represent the board to initiate the conversation and see what their take is on it.
Jim, this is Will. One thing, all of their meetings are online, so nobody goes in there. So it'll all be virtual.
Well, a board member could go in. I could go in or somebody else that seeing that we are town officials.
I would double check on that. So are you going to call, check with Kathy Leonard to get on an agenda?
Yes, I was just going to ask if the board's in favor of doing that, then I was going to ask you if you could.
We should probably vote on that then. Make it official.
All right. We need a motion.
Bob Sheehan makes a motion to approach the select board regarding outdoor venues bylaw changes regarding such and ask for their input.
Do we have a second?
Rob will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, and I'll call you out. Bob Sheehan?
Aye.
Lillian Camus?
Yes.
Rob Chauvin?
Aye.
Jason Smigle?
Jim Trampy?
Aye.
I didn't hear Jason. Is Jason hiding over there?
Jason said aye. Okay.
We also have the small-scale solar installation screening.
What, why is?
That was on the second email I sent.
Yeah, I'm trying to, that's for small scale?
Yes, small-scale solar installations are permitted by Rite because we're a green community. But some people have been complaining that they're eyesores and would like some screening around them. And I believe we can do that. I was looking for some examples and I didn't find them right off the bat.
Yeah, I don't see where that falls under our purview, if it's by Rite.
Yeah, but you can put restrictions on it, just like we did for the large scale.
Yeah, but large scale has been deemed that you need a hearing, a special permit. You don't need a special permit. So I don't know how.
Well, you don't need a special permit for all of those zoning bylaws. Just some of them.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just trying to figure out where.
Where would that?
Yeah, how we.
Ken, can you research that? And see if you can come up with what other towns have done and then maybe we'll have some guidance there.
For sure. I think that, yeah, because you know, in review of what the town passed at last town meeting with the update to the large scale, you know, as the chair mentioned, and as far as I could tell, any small scale, I guess, that would be built, you know, within the parameters of what a small-scale solar would be, wouldn't need any sort of approval from the planning board. Is that correct? Does that statement correct?
Not for installation.
So what, you know, what I think possibly the board can explore, and I'd be happy to do that, is for any any there definitely could be some screening. You may have to introduce some new standards with regards to solar development and, you know, you can put it within that section and amend the solar bylaw to also address solar development in general and screenings specific to small scale or maybe looking at how you have screenings of any, and maybe create a threshold where if you disturb land for any sort of development, whether or not that's a shed or a barn, provide an option or a standard for screening to the bodies. I mean, I think you can go about it in various ways, but I can definitely take a stab at looking to see how how towns regulate that.
Okay, we still have to align with the green community requirements.
Yeah, I don't think by adding screening, you're going to be non-compliant with green communities because you're still allowing solar. Unless I'm misinterpreting, you know, what the ask is, you're just requiring screening. It's just an additional onus to
So, just to interrupt you, Ken, a little bit here. So that means we're requiring site plan review of residential solar.
It's possible. I mean, you can maybe attack it a different way or have the building inspector or whoever reviews the solar development that's built on site on a small scale, also, you know, put the standards within that, that the administrative approval would require a look at landscaping or looking at a screening or landscape buffer. It doesn't necessarily require the planning board to have site plan review, although, you know, some communities, depending on the size of small-scale solar, will, you know, do a site plan review. I mean, and I think a reminder about site plan review, it is an allowed use. It's just that it goes through this additional process of, you know, ensuring that it's compliant with the rest of the zoning bylaw. So, yeah, I think that there's multiple angles in which can accomplish what the town is at least looking into.
Okay. Bob Sheehan had a question.
Actually, Bob Sheehan has a statement. I am not in favor of this at all. Number one, how far are we going to step on private property owners' property? Number two, we're talking about screening of solar. Well, isn't solar supposed to be out in the open to get the full benefits of the panels? Number three, if the neighbor happens to build a legally constructed shed, what gives the abutting neighbor the right to choose the color of it? I am not in favor of this at all. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any input? Any further discussion? Anybody?
I'd like to hear what Ken comes up with.
Yes. Lillian, you said you've been getting complaints. What kind of, they've been coming directly to you or are they?
No, no, this was back when we were doing the large scale. And there was well, there's that one on East Street that's, you know, right there by the road. And there's another one on Amherst, I think almost across the street from Glenn Sexton's house. And you don't, your screening would not be around the front of it, or it would be in the way of the solar. It would be it could be done without getting in the way of solar.
Bob, do you have something else?
Yes. Are we just talking freestanding units or are we also going to be looking at roof units? How do you screen on a roof?
Just freestanding units.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, I'm in favor of having Ken at least take a look at it and, you know, we can go from there. No offense, Lillian, but with everything else we've got, I'm okay with looking into it. I've got it written down as item number seven. And when we go to prioritize, although I don't think that we have too much here that we couldn't present in one night at a town meeting, so. But I think, in my opinion, it'd probably be one of the things towards the end of the the bylaw changes and the rezoning changes to look at. I don't think it'll be that complicated to change it, but in all in all due respect, I don't, I'm not really in favor of getting into that too much, but I'll hold hold my judgment until I hear back from Ken and see what other towns have been doing and what the what the detriment is to the abutters.
I understand.
So Ken, if you could look into that a little bit for us, that would be great.
For sure.
All right, so that's that's pretty much it in a nutshell for zoning and bylaw amendments. Is that correct, Will, that we cover everything?
Well, I assume the stormwater management and the master plan update, you're waiting on the grants, see if the grants are approved. And Chris, to clarify, which Ken has been working on?
Yep, correct.
And did Chris Martin ever get back to him?
No, I think you were attached to that email that I sent, Will. I haven't heard anything back from him. Just a small comment about the stormwater bylaw. It, you know, depending on whether or not you get the grant, the town will be responsible for ensuring compliance with the MS4 permit by the end of next year. So, you know, figuring out with your highway department how to address stormwater as, you know, the planning board through its permitting authority also would be probably privy to some of those conversations. I don't think the town, I don't think the stormwater is in your zoning bylaw, so that already is a benefit.
It was just part of the grant. We were going to use our portion of it for the master plan. And that piece of it was for the stormwater, which really doesn't have anything to do with us.
I think you're looking at the grants, there's two different ones.
Go ahead, Bob.
If I remember correctly, Dave DeRocher had requested some of our time at some point in time to go over the new stormwater phase, whatever, management stuff. And we haven't heard anything from Dave yet, but that request had been made.
Bob, this is, that was part of the MVP grant, the Municipal Vulnerability Action Grant?
I, I do understand that, Will. And, but Dave did say something about we had to create new bylaws and such for stormwater.
Right, and that's what triggered it.
Just a reminder. Just a reminder for everybody.
And Jim, the master plan update was part of the DLTA, District Local Technical Assistance Grant that PBPC has granted us, that Ken's trying to get a clarification of the scope from Chris before it can get started, but it has to be completed by the end of this year, correct, Ken?
That's correct, the, 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 the DLTA project is, you know, we had this conversation, I think, back in, in March, the last time I saw you all. Whether or not it was an update to the economic development element of the master plan, or if it was per the request that Will had shared with the board, a revision to the zoning district to allow for mixed-use products, and that would be a zoning bylaw amendment. That was the, the, the direction on where the town wants to go with that. You know, I think just getting some clarification, because there is two very separate processes with regards to a bylaw amendment versus a master planning effort.
What was the, what was the bylaw amendment with the, the mixed use?
Yeah, so he's, let me see if I can pull that up.
I think that was in your paperwork you got, Jim.
Yeah, if you, the, the request for local assistance, I'm going to just read verbatim what the administrator sent to PBPC. The town of Granby is asking for assistance in reviewing the master plan that was created by the PBPC back in 2010, in that plan, they had proposed a mixed-use zone that would allow for businesses on the first floor and apartment offices on the second floor, like Nailon Insurance. We would like to have this explored with the possibility of these types of developments in other areas of town, which could bring in additional people and traffic and help address the housing shortage that the governor has identified. By creating this new district or zone, we would also look at these developments being located in the village center and along New Ludlow Road. With additional people, then additional stores such as Panera Bread, Starbucks, and other types of establishments may look at the town. As a way of enticing them, we would also like assistance in researching tax increment financing or special tax assessments as a means of attracting these businesses to offset the lack of some infrastructure.
Well, here's, here's the deal, we've already done that, that's why we, we already have the mixed use in five, at five corners, we did that when we did the rezoning the last time. And the, the reason why we, we stuck to the mixed use to that area, because that was the only area that was really conducive to it because of utilities. It's the only place we've got sewer. You need sewer, you need sewer for mixed use. We don't have it anywhere else in town. So that, it doesn't take a lot of research to identify that.
Okay.
You know what I mean, it's, we just don't have the, the infrastructure to support it. And in, and at the five corners area, we only have sewer, we don't have water. But sewer is, you know, is more important for mixed use than the water, you can still do the water off of, off a well, including cisterns if you need, if it requires sprinkler protection. Anyway, to get back to our, go ahead, go ahead, Ken.
No, I was, I was just going to say, I, you know, the, I'm still waiting for the town administrator, I think if the planning board or, or, or you, Jim, can talk to Mr. Martin MC, you know, so that everyone's on the same page, especially if I need to convene a committee to oversee master planning efforts and an update to that. Especially if it's going to involve economic development and making sure the right people are in the room to identify ways to update the plan. That's just a, a comment. Yeah, but we do have to.
Go ahead. Okay.
That was it.
Okay, the, well, to update the master plan from the planning board's perspective, the planning board has full oversight over that, so. I, with, with, with the grant money, if, if applied, I would, I would recommend that the board have Pioneer Valley, you, review it and see where we're out of compliance or what needs to be updated specifically, and then address, address it that way. Does that make sense?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, that would be with the effort of the, of, you know, a master plan effort, and I, I think, you know, you, you mentioned as the planning board is the keeper of the master plan, I am comfortable because some communities use a steering committee to address certain aspects of a master plan, but if the planning board is, I'm willing to be that steering committee, I'm very comfortable working with the board, especially since I know four of you. And, and working towards what the end product is going to be. So, you know, I think still getting the clarification from Chris Martin that we're going to be pursuing this, or at least making that comment that we're going to be pursuing this, and obviously, within the plan, try to address the concerns that were presented in the request, like mixed use and, as, as you said, the requirement that mixed uses need most, more than likely, you know, sewer connection. It's just, just updating what we currently have in the economic development element currently, and see where the town is at the moment. And, yeah, I mean, I foresee the process being relatively straightforward, but, you know, whether or not a, a survey, you know, is, is needed for this, you know, that's things to explore with the board, and maybe at the next meeting or a future meeting discussing next steps with regards to that.
Okay, all right, well, let's see if we can get some information on it, Chris. Between now and then. So between, between now and our next meeting, I'd like to get get Ken to go out, if, if the board's in agreement, let's start with the first, the first three items, which are probably, at least in my opinion, the, the most important is the rezoning, let's get started on those. If we could pull the maps out and then pull the bylaws out so that we can, we can identify specifically the, the areas we're talking about. Which is kind of hard to do with most.
Sorry, go ahead.
What was your question, Ken?
I was, I was just going to ask, you know, obviously, it, it, as you mentioned, it does require to go through a mapping exercise, is it, do you, when you approach zoning map amendments, do you use the, assuming you use the assessors' maps and you, you identify the parcels that you want changed, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And what, what we've done in the past, I don't know if anybody on the board, I don't think there's anybody on the board that was other than myself that was involved in it the last time. But I'll give, for instance, the 202 corridor. We, we picked areas, let's say, from the South Hadley Line to the Village Common. And we, we created that whole area of frontage business zone. How far back did we go? Let's say we went, we tried to look at property lines, but I think we kept it to like 500 feet back, even though it didn't, even though some of the property lines went back further. Some of them went back so far, they went, you know, way back into residential zones. So I, so when we look at that, I think we should be, we should be consistent, take a look at the, the the tax maps, the, the assessors' maps, and then see, and, and look to see which which properties look like, you know, how, how consistent are they with the setbacks? And then, and then pick some sort of a number that makes sense, that 500 feet setback, or maybe, maybe on, maybe it's more on East Street, I don't know, we'd have to take a look and see what that, what that would do for the town.
A, a question is, considering that you're changing from residential to commercial or industrial for, for those various zones. Is, is it a town policy or previous zoning map amendments, have you had split zones where you have the first 500 feet? You know, the more intense use, and then the, the rear of the parcel be, you know, residential or, or a less intense use? Or is it?
No, 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 what we, what we did was, the more intense would be industrial or, or business park, we were specific to, to those areas, like New Ludlow Road. 202 corridor was, was a zone business from the, from the, the, the the front, from the frontage back 500 feet, we didn't. And, and because it's mixed, because it's residential, it was done as an overlay, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
If you go back and look at what we did in, what was it, 14, 2000, I think it was 2014. I think it was 2014.
Okay, I mean, I, I'll use that as a guide, because if the town keeps posts their town meeting minutes on there, I can at least, you know, do a, a dive into that and see how the planning board presented those zoning map amendments. I will say that the document that I shared with the board, the, the email that I shared with the board, and Will sent that out yesterday, was the Westover Air Force, Air Reserve Base Joint Land Use Study. And one of the maps that I provided a link for, I believe, show the zone that you're looking to change. And that's just, just a comment, and maybe that is a starting point for the board and for me, because I'm, I'm, you know, I'm not very familiar with the geography other than writing down the notes that you've mentioned. But I think that map, I think shows where your zoning map will be changed.
Yes, it does.
Okay.
That's, that's just that portion of East Street.
So that's the one of the three that you're looking to amend, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That piece that you've outlined, I, I, I think we want to bring that all the way back though, to New Ludlow Road for the, the one phase. Not just, not just that, that, the air accident zone there.
Okay. What I'll do, I think, what I can do is, for the board on Monday, at least, try to come up with the, the Mass GIS, it's the Massachusetts, they have a clearinghouse of data layers that can be mapped, and I believe every year, the Assessors' Office has to update those layers. So, most recently, I believe, the, the map is updated, so I can probably create PDFs or at least some sort of document to show, and you can show me through, through maybe this, I don't know if we have the ability to share on, on on this virtual setting, or at least explore the, the possibility of me sharing my screen to go through a exercise to identify those parcels. But at least for the next meeting, be able to give you a document which shows a focus geographic area of where the zoning map will be changed.
Okay. Yeah, these are, this is going to be tough to do remotely, I can.
Yes, it is, I do think that the, the ability to share a screen, if there's permissions that the town can provide to, you know, the, the outside parties, whoever is, you know, hosting this, I definitely think that it would make it easier if I'm able to at least go through an exercise where we can at least focus on the parts of the the zoning map where those parcels need to be changed.
Okay.
At least make it easy.
Well, for the purpose of our next meeting, if you could, if you could put as much of that together, including the everything that we discussed tonight, the three, the three zones, the accessory, accessory building, outdoor venue, but we'll hold off on the outdoor venue until we talk with the select board. Agricultural uses, and what was the other one? I guess that was it.
Okay.
Whatever you can get together for our next meeting, we'll, we'll.
What about the oversized barns?
Yeah, that's what, that was the accessory building, that's what I was referring to, the, the barn. So the three zones, the accessory building slash barn threshold. I think that was it, because the agricultural use went under the, I have it down here as a note for myself, under the outdoor venue bylaw.
Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can put a package together, I may not, you know, it may not be a, a final product. It's more so of gathering the part, the particular language that the board may want to explore. The, the zoning stuff, the zoning map stuff, definitely, I can probably come up with maps, just rough maps. And maybe working with the chair, working with you to just identify those parcels, and then have some rough language for the, a warrant article.
What do you mean by rough language?
Well, like, you know, identifying, you know, what parcels.
I'm just kidding.
Yeah.
Look, you've got, you know how to get ahold of me, so I'm available.
Okay, very good.
Your convenience. Okay, I think, especially with this weather that's coming in right now, there's, we don't have Okay, I think, especially with this weather that's coming in right now, um there's, we don't have anything else.
No, and we have our next meeting July on Tuesday, July 28.
Yes.
Hey, Jim, this is Rob Chauvin. Um this wasn't on the agenda tonight, but um someone in town asked about um the possibility of like building an in-law apartment on the second floor of a barn. I know that's not on our bylaws, so maybe that's something we can look at down the road.
Yes, I had a discussion about that with um the building inspector. And it it they can do that. And he there's, it's a primary. And then if they decide to build another dwelling on the property, it has to be attached. It can be done, there's no reason why it can't be done.
Right, so the question that came, right, the question that came to me is this isn't it, it's an existing barn, you know, unattached from the house, so they're looking at building a in-law apartment on the second floor of the barn.
This is something different.
Yeah, that's.
You know, yeah. I'm I'm certainly in favor of that. I I take no issue with it. I I wouldn't have a problem with with um presenting that. I I I'm pretty sure we have to go through uh zoning board of appeals though. Bob, Sean?
Um I don't know if that is allowed because it would be considered two separate dwelling units on a single piece of property. So that's something that would have to be looked at.
Correct. I thought Bob was talking about something else that the they were gonna build a barn, put an apartment above it. And then later on, they were gonna build a house. And they and you can do that as long as the house is attached to the to the barn or the garage or whatever. But what Rob's saying is, he's been, he's been approached by somebody that wants to do the same thing, but just not or or one's already existing and they're trying to put an apartment above the barn and.
That's correct.
That's that's a right now, like as Bob said, they're not allowed. It wouldn't take much to put language together to to have that changed. I I'm a firm believer in 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 doing that in this day and age. A lot of people are doing it for in-laws. You know, they're calling in-law apartments, and there's no reason why you shouldn't be able to take care of your parents. Now, if it's your in-laws, if it's really your in-laws, that may be a different story. Anyway, yeah, we could, we can talk about that some more, Rob.
All right, sounds good, I'll pass that along.
I I would definitely be in favor of doing that. I think we'd probably have to get some input from uh zoning board of appeals. And I don't know as if they have I'm gonna have to talk with with uh Chris Martin, because they're all appointed, and I don't think they have a I don't know if they even have a chair right now.
Isn't Jeremy the chair?
He resigned. He filled, he finished, I shouldn't say he resigned, I believe he he finished his term and chose not to uh So I'll look into that.
All right, thank you.
Any any other any other discussion? I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Jason, second. Any discussion? Follow in favor? Uh Ken?
Aye.
Lillian Kamis?
Aye.
Bob Chauvin?
Aye.
Jason Smigel? Jim Trompke, aye. We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.